Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 2 o'clock, Friday, August 17. The Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation now convenes this Oversight Hearing. The Oversight Hearing were given, notice were given to the media. The first was on Friday, August 10, 2018. Second notice was on Tuesday, August 14. And for the record, today is Friday, August 17. The Committee will hear and accept testimony both oral and written on the following, basically on the areas of tax collection, tax enforcement, and tax compliance. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me today. And I have the Speaker, B.J. Cruz, to my left. And I have my favorite Senator from Dededu, Maynaw, Senator Mike Saniklas. The conduct of this Oversight Hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of the sign up on the signing sheet. Written testimony may be read. Written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. But we're not going to apply the five minutes because it's communication with the Oversight, okay? But for other folks, yes. Testimony should be confined to the substance. Persons will be allowed to present their testimony only once. So please be firm on your testimony, okay? So that we can follow your testimony. And then, when you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name for the record. I know we have present today, we have Mr. John Camacho, the Director of Revenue and Taxation, and the Deputy Director, Marie Benito. We will start with Mr. Camacho. If, you know, we did have slides. If you wanted to go over the slides, we can do it. If there's any areas that you didn't cover on the floor during session, we can go over it again one more time if you want. Also, present, we have Senator Regina Besculie, the LSE Secretary and Chairwoman of the Committee on Rules. If you want, Mr. Camacho, we can throw the slides up if you choose to and explain more or if you even have more update to the information that you provided to us. Would you like to do that?
Yes, first thing, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Senator Augustine, Speaker Cruz, Senator Saniklas, and Senator Biscull. Thank you for this opportunity to present on our Oversight, our operations and enforcement over at Department of Revenue and Taxation. I guess with me, I have our Deputy Director. And I guess we can start off basically by, I know we did the presentation on the Committee as a whole Friday. Basically, we went through the slides. But if you want to go over the slides or you have any questions, we only have two additional, I guess, presentation that we want to actually in relation to what we talked about on the Friday. I've given update of the amnesty and the receivables. So I'm having at least make copies for those actually two documents that we want to talk about.
Okay. So you do have updates then?
Yes, just two. To update the amnesty and some of the things that were asked on the receivables, a breakdown of the different categories of receivables. Those are the two things. But if you have any questions in regards to the presentation, we can go to that slide and basically, you know, we'll try and answer any questions.
All right. Does any of my colleagues, would you like to have the, because we can have it put back up on the screen, sir? Senator Lee? I think we should. There you go. It's up, Mr. Camacho, it's up on me. You can just ask them, go to the second slide.
Yeah. We'll just go into the A.R. I think we did a make copy. I think they're making copies for, on the accounts receivable.
The slide you're referring to?
Yeah, go to page... Keep going. Somewhere. One more, one more. I guess that's where we left. And I think, I think there was a question on the categories of revenues, I mean, the receivables on the different classes of taxes.
Correct.
So we actually have this to hand out in addition to that.
Okay.
So we can explain that, what the process is on the $73 million receivable.
Is there any other areas you want to cover while they're making stuff?
And we're just going to basically update the amnesty, what we have on the amnesty, which is the last, I guess, second to the last.
Mr. Camacho, when we first, in the S E S, when we first started to talk about the amnesty, I remember at the very beginning, you were hesitant about during the amnesty and you made mention of some 80-20 rule or something. You're concerned about losing the penalty and interest. With the $33 million that you're getting in amnesty, or that you're hopefully going to get in amnesty, how much in interest and penalties did you waive?
I don't have that report with me, Mr. Speaker. But basically, our process basically is that when we receive the application, we do a full compliance, making sure that all the taxes are declared. And then, basically, once the taxes are fully paid, then that's basically when we go on to those penalties. But I can, for those, for those taxpayers that have cleared with the compliance check, meaning they comply with all their taxes, everything is filed, everything is paid, then we can start running those numbers. I think there's some of them that are already completed, but we don't have the numbers with that right now.
So am I to understand that when you, when you, several months ago, when you had the list of $193 million, was any of that interest and penalty or was that all just tax owed?
No, no, the one eighty includes penalties and interest, yes.
Well, that's why I'm trying to figure out, now that you're down to 73, it would seem to me that 120 is gone somewhere.
No, no.
So I'm trying to figure out where the, how much in interest, how much of that 193 was interest and penalty? And how much did we lose, did you waive or forego as a result of the amnesty?
Like I said, I don't have that number right now. But I did talk about Friday, about the allocation of the tax amnesty. I believe the total declared of about $32, $33 million. I did mention that of that $32, $33 million, about $14 million is coming from the receivables. And that the $18, $19 million is actually for the non-filers that are coming in that were never in the receivables. In other words, these are the taxpayers that actually came in, they submitted their application, here's my return, I'm paying the 10%, and then going, you know, before the end of the amnesty, I'm going to pay the 90%. So it's only on that $14 million that we're looking at right now that's declared on tax. And once those taxes are paid, I think at the end, at the end, we will report to you and let you know how much of the penalties and interest are waived.
And even the $18 million that were delinquent non-filers, am I calling them correctly? Is that the correct name?
What's that?
The $18 million?
Yes, those are non-filers.
Delinquent non-filers. The delinquent non-filers would also have a penalty and interest assessment, even if you waived it immediately, but you still have to, some kind of, you keep a record of how much you waived, right?
Yes, basically, if you were to come in and let's say filed a 2,000 return, 2,003, whatever, we would compute all those interest and penalties from the due date of those returns. And if they comply, basically, we're paying 100% of the tax and they comply with all other taxes. Remember, this is a compliance, it doesn't mean that if you owe income tax, you may owe GRT, you may owe property tax, you may owe other taxes. So that's why we have to make sure that this particular taxpayer that actually filed for amnesty is covered on all the different taxes that is owed by him or her or by the business.
See, what I'm trying to get at is with that $193 million, if we knew how much was penalty and interest, because, okay, I'll use myself as an example. Remember when I kept telling you about the fact that I had owed some, because I filed in October as opposed to April, the interest was 400 or penalty was, it was like $1,400.
We have a breakdown.
I was like, what? So it's fairly substantial.
Yes, if the, if the taxes are really, really delinquent for many years and it accrues.
No, this was, this was six months, between April and October. And they assessed me penalty and interest for not filing in April. And it was $1,400. So I thought, that's pretty substantial.
Because of the, well...
Mr. Camacho, maybe you can just, just use any rough number. What is the interest number? 2%, 3%, 4%?
It's going to be very hard, Senator, Mr. Chairman, because if you owe taxes, let's say 10 years ago, or eight years ago, or five years ago, and the amount of taxes that you owe, definitely those taxes and interest are going to be high because they accrue interest, interest and interest.
But what is the number? What's the magic number you're using? 2%? 4%? 5%?
Oh, the interest is right now 4%.
Okay, it's 4%.
4% interest, yes.
And, you know, I think basically, we need, the people Guam need to know, you got 4% to start on the amount, and then what is the penalty? What is the percentage on penalty on that amount? See, the people who Guam are watching this, Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
And a lot of them are mathematicians, they got their calculator, they're already looking at what is 4%, what I owe, what I should pay. And for some of the folks that haven't filed, are probably hoping there'll be another tax amnesty. If not, they know it's going to catch up real fast. So it's to be able to explain that, so that, as the Speaker was asking, out of the 193, we may have, we might have said, don't do the tax amnesty if you're collecting 33, but we lost 50 million. See, those are the information we need to know, so that we have a very good understanding. Because if there's 73 that's still collectible, out of the 73, which includes interest and penalty, is it really only $20 million that's out there?
I can get that number for you, I don't have the numbers. But we do have allocation of the tax interest and penalties. I think I can get those, those numbers. But we do have, even for the 193, we do have what the tax is, what the interest is, and what, I just don't have the numbers. I didn't know where we're going to get into that, but...
Yeah, because, because the panel here, my colleagues would like to know all the numbers. Because after tomorrow, we'll be very concerned about when we look at 73 million and we say, and you report that out of the 73, third, more than 50% is interest and penalty? You know, that's, that's a different ballgame.
Well, the 73 is not in the amnesty, you got to remember that.
No, the collectibles.
Oh, the collectibles, yes.
But 73 is no different when the tax amnesty came in place. You're collecting 33, exactly what the Speaker was asking. How much interest and penalties did we lose? Did the people Guam lose because of the amnesty?
Yes, I'd like to add that right now at this point, it's hard to generate that report because not all the payments are in yet. Until the period ends for the payment, then we can come up with that report. Then we know who paid and we can see the difference. And I'd like to add also that the non-filers, their interest and penalty will not be in this report because they have to be processed and then assessed. So you're right, Speaker, when you said everybody gets assessed interest and penalty.
But I think the Chairman was correct. With this 73, even with just this 73, how much of this is interest and penalty?
On the amnesty, okay.
No, 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 not on the amnesty.
We'll provide, Mr. Speaker, we can give you that number, we just don't have the number, no. We can, it's easily, we can compute the, segregate the tax interest and penalties.
Remember distinctly, when we first brought up the amnesty, you were opposed to it.
Yes.
Because you didn't want to lose the amnesty. I mean, you didn't want to lose the interest and payments. And you used some 80 rule.
Yes.
And I was, I was thinking, I went and looked, it wasn't a Gatsby Rule 80. And so was there 80, was that 80 million that we were going to lose from that 190? Or what?
Right. If you're speaking right now of the amnesty on the receivable side, you know, we'll try and get that number for you. And also, on the, on the non-filer, what the penalties and interest that we actually waived upon full payment, we can give that to you too. So we just don't have the numbers right now.
Is there anything else you wanted to go over on the slide?
No, just handout, if you have the first handout on the receivable, I think they want, somebody wanted to give a breakdown on really what the different taxes on that $73 million that we talked about Friday. So this is the breakdown of the $73 million receivable that are, we're actually aggressively collecting right now. So, you know, the corporation, you can tell 9.8, individual 8.4, roundoff, recording is 8.3, income tax, others, these are basically like 45, 49, those are things that are produced by exam, and other income taxes, 12.8. And of course, BPT, which covers everything, which is 23.9, roundoff. So that's the total. I think somebody asked that last time.
So approximately about 400, you've collected, you received about 400,000, is that what you're saying, right? Out of the last report?
What's that?
Last reported, the tax amnesty was 9.4 million. You have on this update is 9 million.
Yeah, let me just explain, we're in the amnesty now?
No, on your, on your handout, just, I'm just looking over what you presented on the floor and what you've given us.
Yeah.
Because we're very, we're very curious and we would like to know exactly how much has been collected. Because I'd like to know exactly what is your percentage per month? And what are we anticipating the average would be every month with the additional folks that you have on board now? Because I know they need the training and stuff to do this, but I just want to make sure that's...
On the amnesty, basically, last time we reported was based on August 6, in which we collected about $25 million. And 9.4 was the balance. These are all drafts, by the way. So, and then, the one that I'm updating right now, if you received it, if you have this new update on the amnesty, we just add an additional million dollars, I guess, on the collection and we reduce the balance down to about $9 million. So that's the latest as of August 14.
Just curious, Mr. Camacho, when you look at your draft as of 8/6/18, you have 34 million that's tax due. And then of your, as of 8/14, it jumped to another million. How did you jump 900,000? I'm just...
I guess, I mean, I can explain. Every, every time we issue a report, it's a draft report because, in other words, these are numbers. So, right now, we updated, most of that is really, we updated the real property tax. It went from 1.3 to 1.5. And then the amount went from, I guess, 900,000 to about $1 million on collection.
The only thing I'm, we are, I'm almost betting that all my colleagues are very concerned, is once the application date ended, the numbers don't change.
Yes.
It will never change unless you change it. If there's any reassessment...
The only time it will change, like I keep saying earlier, is the compliance check.
Okay.
In other words, if you came in...
Or the amount.
Yeah, and you came in and say, okay, I only owe you for two years. And we went through a system and say, hey, wait a minute now, mister, you know, you failed to include these other two years or this year. Then you'll change, yeah.
Okay, then, now I can see that. The numbers are still the same, 230, 1103. I'm looking at the total applications and they, they're up by 10 on your, on your total real property tax. How do you up it when the application already ended?
What was that, Senator?
If you look at the two, three, just look at both.
Yes.
The application's up by 10.
Application went up by 10, the application closed?
Right.
That's all I'm getting at, is that, you know, we're looking at your numbers, we're trying to bank on your numbers, but when the numbers don't match, it's...
Yeah. You know, when, that's why we always put out a draft. Sometimes, I work with my staff, sometimes when the amount is taken, sometimes it's taken in one or both taxes, it's double. And if you want to look at the first income tax, this is the reason why I wanted to show you, it went from 21.6 to 21.2. That's because they were doubling it up. In other words, the amount where they shouldn't be doubling it up. So when we correct those areas, then we get the right amount. Okay?
Okay. Please continue on your handout, explaining that to us, so then we'll ask questions as we go along.
So on the amnesty, again, if you look at the income tax, we're at 21.2, we collected 17.4, and ending balance is 3.8. BPT is 11.1. And amended, or 11.1 basically is declared, 7.17 is paid, and we have 3.9 balance. And use, use tax, occupancy tax, limited gaming tax, they're declared at 1.4, 649 is paid, we have 782 actually as balance. And then the total income tax basically is 33, and then 25 was paid, and then 8.4 balance. And the real property, we got 1.5 declared and 1 million paid at 521,000 balance. And then at the end, total amnesty is 35.3 roundoff, 26.3 paid, and 9 million balance on the total amnesty.
The next page of your handout, your update?
You make copies?
No.
Which one? It's about your accounts receivables, the collections.
On the accounts receivable?
Do you have the second one?
This one, yes. I guess this is the breakdown of the $73 million that were actively, and again, it's the same thing that we had, but I think the staff of Speaker Cruz asked that we break down it by categories of taxes. So this is what we have, the breakdown.
Yeah, well, Senator Lee that asked that question. And I think one of the questions was, we all know about the $14.7 million lien that's outstanding, right? Where is it here? Is it here in the IT other or, I mean, is it in the BPT?
It's not, Mrs. Speaker, it's not here. Let's go back to the receivables on the, I thought I explained that earlier on Friday.
You're saying the 14.7?
These are the aggressive receivables that we're looking at. These are the ones that we have no, we haven't secured anything. So these are the aggressive, remember the special account?
Understood. No, I just want to, we just want to make it clear because on the floor, Senator Saniklas and Senator Lee brought up is that where is the 14.7 that was on the news? We're not going to identify names, okay, so the Federal Disclosure Act. But there's 14.7 that was on the news, they just wanted to know, my colleagues want to know.
I'm going to try, I'm going to...
Is it here?
I'm going to try to go back to our presentation so I can, I can explain again one more time.
Okay.
Can we go back to that receivable?
Is this the one? Yes, this is the receivable. Active status count.
Is that the one, John? The 128?
The 186. The 186.
One back, chill.
Can you tell them?
Residual, that one.
Yeah. That one where it says, are a residual balance?
Yes.
That's the one. Okay. This is what I explained last time. The 193 basically is what we were saying, is the receivable that we have on hand right now. We have a process of step by step, you know, when they make the assessment in accounting and it goes through notice, we take that out because eventually that will get into the collection branch receivable. We come down with 186. I mentioned earlier that we have special review reconciliation that we talk about, that we're looking at. There's the biggest one there that we add is the $44 million that we're reconciling that we're saying it won't be collectible. So if you take 186 and you less the 57, now we're looking at the 128. So on the 128, we have special classes that we already secured. And those classes are on the 33.5, and also the second account contracts and/or installment agreement terms, 22.6 million. And then we receive 1.2 million new receivables to arrive at the 73.1 million. So if you look at that, then that would answer your question.
It'll answer where the 14.7 is at? We're concerned about what was on the news, because I don't want you to review anything. Like I mentioned, it's a Federal Disclosure Act, but it's what's on the news? We wanted to know, is it a corporation, individual?
You're asking for a specific question, so we can't answer the specific questions, okay?
Okay, that's what I was waiting for you to say. Thank you. Senator Saniklas, do you have some questions before, and then we can continue on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, John, hi, Marie. Thank you for making time to come down again today. I actually have a number of questions with respect to some public laws that we've enacted over the course of this term that are applicable to the responsibilities of your agency. In line of the conversation that we're having about receivables and active accounts and amnesty, we passed in October 14, 2017, what became Public Law 34-51, which was originally Bill 24-34. And this was an act to add a new section 4124, Chapter 4, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing monthly consolidated tax collection reports. This was passed back in October, and it mandated that the Director of Revenue and Taxation shall prepare a monthly consolidated tax collection report excluding any identifying information regarding any taxpayer, which shall report the aggregate monthly activity of the collection branch of the Department of Revenue and Taxation for the individual income tax, withholding tax, corporate income tax, and business privilege tax, which shall include broken down by tax units and balance, the beginning inventory, referrals received during the month, assessed accruals, total inventory, offsets, payments made to the Treasury of Guam, payment transfers, inactivation, abatement, total adjustments, and the ending inventory. And the Director of DRT shall certify the reports, which shall be transmitted to Imaga Laing Guahan and the Speaker no later than 20 days after the end of each month. This was passed back in October, and to my knowledge, these reports have never been filed.
I understand it, it's something that, I know we were complying with the income tax refund status report. It's a lot of things that we have, the resources that we have. But I guess we discussed that in the past on trying to establish that, you know, reporting that you're citing. So basically, to be honest, it's the resources that we have, and we were trying, we're doing our best, and we're looking at that now, Senator Saniklas. And then we'll see what we can do moving forward. But it's always a resources issue when it comes to our department. It's, it's, you know, there's a lot that we do.
John, I'm not trying to be difficult, but the reason why I structured this particular law this way was because when we were working together when I was Chair of Finance and Taxation, and I requested these reports, you were able to just push a button and print the screen. This is literally spelled out with reference to that particular screen. It doesn't require you to hire somebody new or to open up a new department. It doesn't require you to hire somebody new or to open up a new department or to incur any additional cost. It really is just printing a particular screen that would generate this report and then just sending it down to the body. And so, you know, I know that oftentimes, you know, we retreat to the line that we need money to do things, but this is not, this is not an additional expense item. This is just generating a report and sending it down here. And all it does is it shows us what you guys should be looking at already on a regular basis, which is the collections and the collections activity and then just striking out the identifying information.
Okay, I'd like to add that that report that we used to provide is no, we're no longer using that report. And because the information there, we're still trying to reconcile that information, we're moving towards other reports and automation and we're looking at our vendor to provide these reports. So that report that we used to provide, we no longer use. We're trying to, and they're prepared manually. This one person has to manually prepare these reports. So that's why it's taking us a long time and we're almost at that stage where we can start generating those reports that the old one that we used to issues, we're no longer using.
It's just, I would imagine that these reports would be prepared on a regular basis. This was enacted ever since October and for us to not even receive it, you know, how many months later?
Yes, but, yes, no, I understand.
Maybe in the first month or second month, but there's just never been a report sent up to us about this.
We're getting close to, when we first came in, we said we had a huge problem with our AR. So because of reconciliation, so we've been working on that AR. We're at the point where we're confident now with the numbers and start giving out reports. If you can see that we had some adjustments, it went from one ninety-three, one eighty-six. So as we go along, we're cleaning up the AR as far as overpayments, underpayments. So we want to make sure that we provide a good, clean report before we issue it to you or the public.
I think it's just important to understand why this report and your inability to generate it over all these months is so significant, because this report is basically the actionable report. If you cannot report on all of your collections outstanding, how can you collect? And so that's why, you know, when I passed this law, it wasn't just to give you guys an extra duty. It actually creates the snowball effect where once the report's generated and once we're all looking at it on a regular basis, then we can see our progress. We can see where our holes are, we can see if more resources are needed. And just the simple act of generating the report is confirmation that it's being looked at. The inability to do that only underscores the questions as to why these collections continue to accrue and why we're not collecting the money in order to be able to meet our financial shortfalls. So I just wanted to, Mr. Chairman, first bring up this particular law because this is the first step towards solving our collection problem, being able to track it and report it. So I really hope that the department can get these reports to the legislature so that we can be seeing these things.
Yes, we can provide an accurate report. Again, we didn't want to, you know, issue out reports that were inaccurate because then it'll fall back on us about inconsistent reporting.
I understand, Marie, it's just that this is since October.
So moving forward, we will start working on those reports. Thank you.
The other law, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to bring up that also became Public Law thirty-four dash fifty-two, actually speaks to an article that was generated by The Post in their editorial section dated August sixth of this year. And it talks about the subject of making sure we're collecting taxes from these off-island contractors who are doing business here on Guam. And this other public law was requiring you, John, to provide another report. This was enacted back in October. It gave you a hundred and eighty days from the enactment of this act to begin generating this report. And a hundred and eighty days after it was enacted takes us to April twelfth, twenty-eighteen. By April, we should have had this report. And this basically required the Director of Revenue and Taxation shall, utilizing expanded data sources, including the USA spending website, determine the Guam sourced income generated from federally contracted activity by contractors who file in a jurisdiction other than Guam, reconcile such income information with the Section thirty reimbursement attributable to such income and report its findings for further action to the Governor and to the Speaker no later than a hundred and eighty days from enactment of this act. Now basically, what this law told you to do was to generate this report, go into these federal resources, look at all the contracts that have been issued to contractors doing projects on Guam, compare that to what you have on your records for tax filings and reconcile that. And whoever isn't filing here, you should report that to the legislature and to the Governor because those are Section thirty claims. And I think that this is Section thirty money that we haven't been capturing for many, many, many years. And so if we're able to get a report on contracts that are posted, but taxes that are not filed by these companies, then we can really, we can go after this Section thirty money.
I know, again, it's a resource issue again, Senator, but I think when we're going to start getting out notices, whether they file or not, that's something that we can't really do. Yeah. But just to let, you know, we do have a task force that we're working on that. I think the Senator probably knows something, you know, that we normally monitor. But as far as indicating who hasn't filed or who hasn't paid, I don't think we can, you know, get that information out. But we do have a task force that basically look into these things, basically contracts that have been awarded and whether they're filing or not, these are tax compliance brands, basically that we're looking to this. And we do pursue these things. But as far as informing outside that we, these are the people that are not filing, that are filing, I don't think we can share that information.
Excuse me. Mr. Kamal, I just have a very simple follow-up to Senator Nicholas' statement reference to Section thirty. Last week during session, the BBMR Deputy Director, Mr. Burns and yourself, all three of you were there, correct? You remember that, right, that night? And Mr. Carlson stated that there's a request for seventy-eight million for Section thirty money. How is Section thirty money determined, the amount? What basis is downtown or your department using to determine what amount of Section thirty money we should be getting from DC, from the United States? I'm very curious to know that because it refers back to several of the bills that, if they're foreign, whichever company that's doing business on Guam and they're collecting money and we're supposed to get money from them, then what's driving that train that from sixty-eight it jumped to seventy-eight? And at one point, I think that night, they mentioned as much as a hundred million dollars. So I'm just curious, what is the basis to determine how much we're supposed to get in Section thirty money? Because I'm almost sure Department of Revenue and Tax is actually the key to determine the amount we should be getting because you guys do a yearly reconciliation of that. So I'm just curious if you can explain that to my colleagues.
You know, Section thirty really consists of three categories. Basically, you know, these are all federal agencies that we get. That's the biggest chunk of the Section thirty that are here in Guam. Then we got the active military that actually basically declared Guam as their home of record that we're getting and also the active that are basically not filing. So there's two, three categories that we get normally from these reports on Section thirty. So I think what Lester was saying, we have some information that, you know, we can rely on basically to ask for that seventy-eight million dollars for advance Section thirty. What I basically, I wanted to say basically is that whenever you ask for Section thirty advance, normally the DOIRS normally is about two or three years behind on actually doing their certification for that particular year that we requested. So sometimes it might go up, sometimes it might go down. That's what they call the adjustments that can come. Sometimes we can ask for seventy-eight and let's say we overestimated our advance for three years ago, then they dink us and they reduce that seven. But let's say we understated it, then it goes up. So those are the things that are happening in the process of Section thirty. And also in determining Section thirty is really what's anticipated, any buildup from the military or any increase in military, federal here in Guam. Those have been considered when we're looking into these things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so on this topic, several items, John and Marie. The first is, again, you mentioned, you know, having resources to be able to do this. But John, there literally is one website that you can go to. I mentioned it even in the bill. You click on it and all the contracts that have been issued on Guam pop up. And then you can just go through it, make a list and then take that list and reconcile it to the income tax filings. And if the company's name doesn't show an income tax filing on Guam, that's immediately a flag that this is a Section thirty claim. And so, you know, that's not going to require hiring a new person. It's not going to require installing a new system. It doesn't require more resources. It just requires applying the available personnel to spend a day to do the work.
That's true. I'd like to add, please, when that law came out, we already, I don't know if we responded, but I believe our response was that law was unnecessary only because we were already doing that. USA spending, USAA spending, the federal websites. We also add another one, it's the NAFMAR. We coordinated with NAFFAC and we get records from them quarterly. So, oh, that was already in place when you proposed that bill. So that's already in place. In fact, we just had a IRS conference and again, they shared their ability to, if we can locate those contractors on island, then refer to them, they'll give us a, they'll help us locate the taxpayers and work with us. So we are doing that. We monitor, we check their filings. Those are already, it was already in place before you introduced that bill.
Well, that is concerning on two levels. And the first is that if it is already in place, then our Section thirty numbers should be going up.
Well, Section thirty, that's not included in Section thirty.
And that's why. I think, I know where you're coming, Senator. I think we're talking two different things.
I agree.
One is for the contract, Marie. The other one, I think, is talking about is businesses that are doing business on Guam.
Yes.
We are monitoring that, Senator. That is basically something that we're doing and we're moving forward on that. No, this is, this is the Section thirty for businesses that are doing in Guam. That's what you're talking about, yes.
Yes, and so for example, and we were supposed to be receiving this report ever since April, John, April eighteenth. And just referencing the editorial from The Post, they mentioned here on July twenty-sixth, Agility Logistics Services, KSC, a business out of Kuwait, was awarded a sixty-two million contract to receive, store and ship aviation fuel on Guam. Northrop Grumman Service Systems Corporation of San Diego was awarded forty-one million. Teekigak Construction of Wasilia, Alaska was awarded eleven point eight million. Hensel Phelps was awarded sixty-four million. And so all these are just examples in the last two months. On that website, you can go back so many years. And the thing about Section thirty that makes this such a unique opportunity for us, John, is that the federal government is collecting these taxes already. And so if they're collecting it from these companies on their IRS side, because they're based out of a state and they're not based out of Guam and they're filing state side, the money is already hitting Treasury. All we need to do now is go back to Treasury and say, by the way, that sixty-four million that that particular company made, that was out of Guam. Can you take their effective tax rate for that amount and remit it to us in Section thirty? And this is where the local government, the delegate, we're all supposed to work together to be able to properly reconcile our Section thirty claims. I think we have a long history of contracts being issued, income being earned, taxes being paid that are not being remitted back to Guam on the Section thirty side. And so the whole point of, the whole point of this bill, John, was to, this public law, was to again, get that snowball effect going. Because by generating the report, we will then have something that we can work with and say, hey, you know what? It looks like we have five hundred million dollars over the last ten years issued in federal contracts. Did we get the Section thirty reimbursements from those federal contracts? And if we didn't, we have a substantial opportunity to bring in tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions, depending on how far back we go. And so, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just bring up this law because we passed this back in October and we never got the report. And also the idea that you cannot provide a report, I think is erroneous because if they're not a tax filer here, I don't think there's anything illegal about saying that. I don't think there's anything illegal about saying, based on this website, Teekigak received this contract, they're not a tax filer here on Guam, and then report that. And so I wanted to just make sure that we touched on this, Mr. Chairman, because this is another revenue generating opportunity that I think we're not capturing. Moving on, Mr. Chairman, I have another bill that we passed, also on the same date that was enacted into law, Public Law thirty-four dash fifty-three. And this one also required a report to be generated. The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall, in collaboration with the AB WAMPAT, Guam International Airport Authority, determine the total air transportation taxes paid by the inhabitants of Guam since the establishment of such tax. Reconcile such information with the Section thirty reimbursements attributable to air transportation taxes and report its findings for further action to Imago La Guahan and the Speaker of Lesure Turan Guahan no later than a hundred and eighty days from enactment of this act. This was also supposed to result in a report being generated beginning April twelfth of this year and we have not received anything. And John, this is also a very significant Section thirty opportunity because going back all the way to nineteen seventy, the inhabitants of Guam have been paying an international departure and arrival tax. Every time they buy a plane ticket, it's on your plane ticket. That tax gets paid by the people, but that tax never gets remitted to the Treasury. If my understanding is correct, it always goes to the FAA. Now, if the federal government wants to take this tax and give it to the FAA, that's fine. But based on our organic act, the Treasury is supposed to remit all taxes paid by the inhabitants of Guam back to the territory. And so going all the way back to nineteen seventy up until present day, this air transportation tax has grown and it's now eighteen dollars per ticket. And I think it's very significant because recently a colleague of ours introduced a bill to try and tax incoming arrivals, but the reality is that there's already a tax. There's a tax that we're all paying and it's not getting remitted to the Treasury. And so this law was going to, this law requires you to get on the phone, talk to Chuck Ada and say, hey, Chuck, can we get the departure information outbound from Guam going all the way back to nineteen seventy? And can you provide that to us, please, on a per-passenger basis that we can figure out how much money we're losing here? Because once you get that report from them, it becomes very easy to multiply the outbound passengers by the effective tax rate. And going all the way back to nineteen seventy, every single person who left Guam who originated from here is a Section thirty claim that we can make. And this can be incredibly substantial. This could be in the tens, if not a hundred million dollars. And this is a tax that's already been paid, it's already been collected by the Treasury. Whatever they want to do with it, it's their business, but based on our organic act, we're supposed to recover this as Section thirty money. And so, you know, again, this is a report that we never received and absent the report, obviously, we're not making the claim. And absent making the claim, we're not going to get the money. And in these, and in this environment, you know, we need this money. Another law, Mr. Chairman, that passed also on the same day was Public Law thirty-four dash fifty-four. And I broke these up, Mr. Chairman, intentionally when we introduced them as bills and passed them as laws because I understand that this does require some work, but at least the agency can decide how to prioritize their time to knock them out of the park one by one. This next public law also tries to reconcile Section thirty money that we haven't been collecting over the years. But this time to work with the Treasury and the IRS to target the taxes that the people have been paying for things that have not been filed on Guam. And this particularly targeted Guam sourced income generated by businesses engaged in mortgage financing activities, banking, insurance, trust and investment entities who file in a jurisdiction other than Guam, reconcile such income information with Section thirty and then make the claim from there. Mr. Chairman, everybody who has a credit card and carries a balance is paying interest on that balance. That interest is an income being generated from Guam by a credit card company. That interest is an income being generated from Guam by a credit card company in the States. That interest income is income derived from Guam, and we should be able to have IRS and Treasury help us to identify, in working with these, with those companies, help us to identify how much an interest income is being generated, apply the effective tax rate of those companies to that interest income, and then we should be able to file a Section 30 claim for that. So, for example, John, if Visa has an effective tax rate of 9%, and if Visa generated $200 million in interest income from Guam, we should get 9% of $200 million in a Section 30 claim. Because they would have paid that to IRS, Treasury would have received the money, but that was income derived from Guam, from the inhabitants on Guam. That's a Section 30 claim we could be making. But because we're not tracking that information, we're unable to reconcile that and make the claim to Section 30. And that's just, that's just one credit card company and one example. You know, all of us who have mortgages, and those mortgages that generate interest income that pass through to Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac investors, all that pass-through income that's being paid as interest expenses by the people of Guam, all of that is income derived from Guam. And all of that is potential Section 30 claim. And I know that this, this particular bill, I, we set the date for a report of 180 days, but I was, that was optimistic, and I can understand that that would take more time. But this is something that the work really should get started, because these are recurring revenue streams. Unless credit card companies stop charging interest, we're going to continue to receive this elevated amount every single year, and we'll be able to go back and make a claim for however many years we haven't received these funds. And so, all of these, Mr. Chairman, another example also, by the way, is the withholding taxes on 401Ks and retirement balances in the States. Because those withholding taxes, whenever somebody retires and they receive a distribution from their 401K, automatically, the trust company in the States will withhold the taxes on that distribution. If we're not filing that as Section 30, we're not getting it. And all of that withholding, you know, that's a lot of money. I recently saw a story about the largest retirement company on Guam having assets of $500 million. If the companies that they're working with are making distributions back to their retirees, and they're withholding the tax on that side, and we're not making a claim for on the Section 30 side, that's a huge amount of money that we're missing out on Section 30 as well. And so, this law was requiring you to also come up with a system to track that and to provide for the reports, and we haven't received any reports. So, Mr. Chairman, that just kind of concludes my concern with respect to Section 30. There's a ton of money out there, not just going forward, but a whole lot of back collections that I think we really couldn't make a claim for. But until we get the reports done, until we get the information, the people of Guam will continue to lose out on that money. And especially when we're in a situation like we are right now, where we're having to slash, and we're talking about tax increases, and we're talking about going out and aggressively collecting what's out there, we need to know what's out there. And if we have these Section 30 claims that just need to be reconciled, and then we need to go and bang on those doors federally and say, this is what the organic act says, this is what you're supposed to pay us, how do we meet in the middle? Then we can get a whole chunk of money in for the people of Guam that's been due for us for years. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to lastly touch on the tobacco tax stamp legislation. I know that this required us to be, to have an implementation plan 90 days after enactment. And that 90-day deadline came and went on January 13th of this year. We've never gotten the implementation plan. We still haven't received one. This is supposed to go into effect, this law, which is already codified on the books, is supposed to go into effect October 1 of this year. And so, I understand in my off-channel conversations with DRT that you're interested in perhaps outsourcing the administration of this tobacco stamp program. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask them to get on the record officially.
Yes, please do. I just want to comment a little bit on the Section 30, those information that Senator said. We are already doing that, Senator. We've been communicating with IRS for many years on reconciliation of Section 30, and whether it's for business or construction companies that are, you know, working here in Guam, we are communicating with that, and so, we are in communication, and we're actually, every year, we meet once a year, we go through the process, but as far as reconciliation of Section 30, we are doing that. As far as the air transportation, we are communicating with the airport on that one. So, I think if Marie has any information in that, she can, she can actually.
No, I can't.
Okay. So, as far as the tobacco tax, tobacco stamp tax, basically, you know, basically, we have a draft of the rules and regulations, we even have samples of the stamps that we're looking at, but I think, Senator, our problem is the resources, funding, on going, on these things. I think we wrote a letter to Senator, excuse me, Speaker Cruz, in regards to the tobacco stamp tax, but that's where we are, it's a resource issue, and if, and funding, and if it's, if the legislature is willing to, you know, provide a law that would outsource it, you know, that's something that is up to their body.
Is, but we wanted to know if you're recommending that. Would you support that? Would be that, would that be the ideal direction we should be going? That's what, because that's what we understood earlier, before the hearing.
Okay, well, I'd like to add that, yes, that was one of our recommendations, is to possibly outsource it after reviewing the magnitude of what it was going to take to implement the Stamp Tax Act. We needed to create our own unit, get a warehouse, if we were going to man the machines, get the stamps, so it was very, it was going to be a challenge implementing that. So, that was one of our recommendations, yes, to outsource it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just conclude. John, if we were reconciling these things already with the contractors, then our Section 30 money wouldn't be flat. Our Section 30 money would show variance, because if you have construction activity, it would depend on how much contracted, contracts were issued in a particular year, and so, you would see fluctuations in the Section 30 number. We see a flat Section 30 number, more or less, you know, so, and that's why we wanted to see the reports, because it's one thing to say you're doing it, but if we see the reports, then we actually know it's being done. And then we can actually go back and dig deeper and say, and ask the question, why is it that we're filing these reports and we're saying that we're making these claims, but our Section 30 money is staying flat? You know, and some things not reconciling here, and I want to make sure that we're getting all the money that we're supposed to be getting. So, if we can, if we can just get those, these are already mandates, if we can get these reports, that would go a long way towards ameliorating any of the concerns that are up here. And it would also give us the instruments we need to be able to know where we are of these things, and have confidence that they're actually, they really are being tracked, and you're not just telling that to us. Because right now, you know, our Section 30 number, we just got, it's all over the media, we're, we're still getting the same amount this year as we got last year, in spite of all these contracts being issued. If all these contracts are being issued, and they truly are being reconciled of Section 30, we should be getting a lot more than the same. So, I just wanted to conclude of that, and maybe just advise, John, that, I don't know how, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but at least for me, these oversight hearings are not an attempt to make anybody, you know, look like they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think that we all just need to come to terms with the fact that there are things that have to happen, and if they're not happening, then let's just, let's just get on the ball with it and make it happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Lee, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Mr. Camacho, Ms. Benito, for joining us today. I'm just going to try to take a stab at this, once again, maybe you might be able to help me understand. So, with regards to the amnesty program, when were the applications due?
I forgot, it was August. What was it due, the final date?
For the application, with the 10%, yes.
I know, I guess we know we extended it twice, I believe.
No, I think you extended the deadline twice, but not the application, the initial application with the 10% fee.
Yes, I'm talking about the application. We extended it, I just don't, I got to go back to my notes, but.
June 6th, does that sound like?
We started in May 6th, so we extended it for, I think, another few weeks, then we extended it again, so I don't have the report with me, but whatever that date is, that is the cutoff date.
So, let's say mid-June would be the deadline.
Yeah, June 26th, I think, or something.
Okay, June 26th, that's helpful. So, on your sheet that you submitted and you were showing, the draft amnesty program, this sheet, so it has the total number of applications broken out by tax type. So, income tax is 1,103, BPT is 230, use and gaming tax is 26, and then the combination of that is listed as 1359, and then we have total real property tax listed as 1,040 applications. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's 1,040 on this document as of August 6th, but on this document that you shared with us today, that number rises to 1,050. And so, I'm just puzzled as to why there are 10 additional applications that, what it seems like is it might have been received after the deadline, so I just want to ask that you please explain this discrepancy.
Like I said earlier, that's why we normally will put it down as draft every time we put out a report. We just, the reason why we, I mean, we went through the real property tax, we went through every application and ensured that when we put this report out, that these are the number of applicants that were timely filed for the amnesty. And the numbers did go up from, from 1040 to, by 10, so.
So, it's just a little bit of a challenge for me to wrap my mind around, in the span of eight days, how you were able to uncover 10 additional applications for this amnesty and real property tax, but all of the rest of the tax types remain the same.
And again, this, I know that, I guess it's of June 26th, but again, this is something that, when we usually issue a report, we always put it down as draft, you know, we can welcome you to show you all the applicants for the real property, you know, it could be a mistake or something happened, so, like I said earlier to the chairman about the numbers, sometimes they're added twice, and we need to get it out. So, those are the things that we, you know, when we put out a draft, it's just a draft. So, this is something that, you know, we're, you know, when we actually sign all those applications, those are the ones that are actually going to be, it's even going to go down lower, once we, because some people may not complete the process, so we have to get them out of our process, so those numbers may go down.
Okay. In this other chart that you submitted to the committee today, it's CB status for active accounts as of June 30th, 2018, and you've broken it down, this is a request that I had made during our budget proceedings, that you break them down by type, so in terms of corporations, individual withholding, IT, other and BPT. Are you, it's this one. So, I just wanted to, if you could give me an idea of the time period for these... Sorry, can you just turn the mic on? Thank you.
Again, when you say time period, what do you mean by time period?
So, each of these different types, so like corporation is the first one listed, that's the type of active account, the unit count is 168, and the AR balance is $9,832,984.41. So, that is the balance as, within a certain period.
You know, I can get that report, where basically, if you're looking at how all these receivables are, or is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely.
But if you go back to our presentation, we did an overall of the aging.
Mr. Camacho, I think what the senator's asking is, take that slide you have.
Yes, that's what I was trying to refer.
And create, create it from here.
That's what I'm trying to refer.
The aging summary of the 73, that's what she's asking for.
That's what I'm trying to get, if you go back to the aging receivable, we can put it in that category if you want, Senator, how all these receivables are.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Also, just to, and again, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse each time, but in all of the different things that Senator Siniklas has taken the time to list out, monthly consolidated collection report, determining Guam source income for DoD, basically going back to Section 30, our airport taxes, banking and interest income, withholding taxes on 401Ks, and then the tobacco stamp tax. Every single time we're reaching out to you for enforcement of these public laws, the response that we receive from you is that there's an issue with resources. And so, again, I just want to give you an opportunity to update this body as to how many warm bodies you've been able to hire, based on our appropriation from last year. Again, you know, we had this back and forth discussion, you promised us that you would be able to hire these people to, in the tax collection divisions, and each time, you've been kind of kicking the ball towards DOA, or, you know, there's somebody that you're waiting on a list for, and so, I just want to give you an opportunity again, to update us as to the total number of people and how many outstanding you still have.
I have a report here, I can really, but I can give you a copy of this later.
Okay, that's helpful.
But I can really explain it, or I can have my deputy explain it.
Okay, when you say kick the ball down to DOA, unfortunately, we're not the ones that hire, so, yes, it does go through that process. But 19 of the, out of 36, because of our cost-cutting measures, we reduced it down to 29. Out of 29, we've already hired 19, and then we have 10 pending. The 10 pending right now is two supplemental from DOA, five pending, two pending for the revenue officer, five pending for driver's license exam, and three, vehicle registration officer is scheduled for interview.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I appreciate the number and the update, but I just want to, again, for the record, state that in our last budget cycle, when you came to us with this request, there was pushback from the body. And you, and both of you, as well as your counterparts from DOA, had promised us that you already had, you know, identified people that could step in and do this work, and you had, we had asked you, how long would it take to get these people in those positions? And you said 90 days.
Senator.
And it's been many, 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 many months.
I know, and I can't believe we're still discussing this, because.
Me either.
First of all, we don't identify who's going to take these positions, they go through a process. And I believe DOA was here, Shane, and he explained very well how this process happens. And we can say all we want, but if circumstances, like, I believe in January, it was, everything was frozen, so, you know, they just didn't process the GG ones. Then it was, I believe, you know, they're short also, they had fire, they had customs. If you have four people and 800 applicants out there, it is going to take time to get to it. But I do understand that now they're prioritizing.
Yeah, in terms of priority.
So, they are prioritizing.
We need to make this a priority, so that we can bring the resources in, so that we can, you know, continue to do all the other work that needs to be done within the government.
Right, with driver's license, we have to change, we have to update the position description, and that's why there's a delay, but that's already done. Everybody, I mean, they're working on it, I believe, we already have the list. The only thing pending now is driver's license.
I see. So, but Ms. Benito, you can understand the frustration on our part, when we, when we tell you that these are the things that you, that DRT should be enforcing, and you come back to us and say resources, when we've already given you the authority to do those things. So, it's very frustrating from this.
These are not, these are not the resources we're talking about. We're okay, and I appreciate you giving us the positions, but you keep going back to this, never mind about this, we already explained that already. Let's go back to the resources for reports. Unfortunately, we don't have experts, and we don't have attorneys. So, when these laws are just sitting there, not being worked on, it's because of that resources. You need, you need somebody who can read the law and learn how to interpret it and move on and work with it. I remember. I remember with the airport, one of our staff did look at it, I, I can't remember the answer, but it was something that we couldn't move forward on, but we'll go back and look at all of these.
And when those things are done, is there communication back to, to the chairman about what the, the updated status is? We can't help you if we don't know what the issue is.
Not that I recall.
Yeah, so you know, you need to let us know if it's a legal issue, then we can maybe attempt to assist you.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. A legal issue is a problem. You know, we, our responsibility is to, revenue tax is to ensure collection, right? Bring in the money so we could have a budget and work and, and, and provide government services. So we are doing the best we can with what we have. So here's our problem, we also went to the AG's office, we, we put out an RFP twice, I believe, there was no takers. AG's office put out an RFP, I believe, one, they had one taker who wanted an, an enormous amount of money per hour, so I believe they didn't go with that. Then we came close to outsourcing collections, or at least part of it, and there was a snag in the law that I'd like to work with you and possibly amend it, where we cannot, according to the law, we cannot do a contingency on, on a collection. We can't do the contingency, it has to be upfront, and you know, at this point, nobody has the money, nobody has that kind of budget. So if we can put that into law, and the BPT contingency fee, then I, I believe we can move forward. But we are doing, you know, what we can. Again, Senator Siniklas, we will go back and look at all of those. Some, I mean, when I go back to section 30, when you brought up, why is it stagnant? It wasn't, okay, when we first came in, I believe we were at low 60s, we're now at high 78s. So you can see that we've moved, we've progressed during the years. In fact, the first three years, I believe we brought in 30, 40 million because of our reconciliation. So revenue tax is doing its share and doing its part to bring in the money.
Okay, Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to underscore why this is so important. For example, with the, the trusts and the IRAs, for example, when we have people contributing to their 401K, that's deducted from their gross income. And so those deductions from their gross income are taxes that we're not collecting.
Yes.
We're supposed to collect them on the back end.
We have.
When the, when they reconcile the taxes that have been paid and they reconcile the payments that are going out, those withholding taxes are supposed to be remitted back to the territory.
You're right.
And it's, it's, well, I'm, I'm concerned about that because you would then need to be making sure you're reconciling from all those different sources.
Yes, and we have. We've monitored them, we go through their EIN, we look at, we look at the entity, and if we believe that they have some withholding out there that should come to Guam, then we reconcile that with IRS. So again, we came in at.
But Marie, a lot of these companies aren't even, aren't even licensed to do business on Guam.
No, but when they file their returns, see, we have our ways, and we know how to look for these things, so we are monitoring that.
The other one, Mr. Chairman, is the mortgage interest deductions, in that the, like, for example, if I get a mortgage up at a local bank here, and it's an adjustable rate mortgage, they portfolio in-house, that adjustable rate mortgage interest income gets taxed as income earned by the institution. If, on the other hand, the institution doesn't portfolio the loan and they sell it away to Freddie Mac or Fannie Mae, I'm still paying interest on the loan, but it's not being booked as interest income on Guam. And so those, I mean, it's, the inequity is glaringly obvious. If it's interest income portafollied on Guam, then we would collect the tax on it, but if it's interest income portafollied outside of Guam, we're not collecting it because of the pass-through. And those are, I mean, all you need to do is pull up this, all the Schedule Es that are filed, look at all the interest deductions on every single Schedule E, and that is all potentially escaped tax revenue. And we can just, all we need to do is reconcile that with revenue, with IRS, and get a section 30, a section 30 claim.
Like I said, Senator, we are doing that already, so basically, we have a task, even we have a task force for that. So you know, I keep saying in, in, earlier that we are working on these things. I mean, just to elaborate on Marie's, we, we do collect a lot of section 30s.
But if, if we're working on those things, John, then the report shouldn't be hard to provide. And this was all the way back in October of last year, and we haven't received a single report.
I know, but if you look at the history of, of section 30, I think we can point out at a, at a particular fiscal year, how much we were getting in addition in some of those fiscal year through our reconciliation process with the IRS. We've been doing it, we, we, we've been doing it, we've been getting money. I mean, that's what I'm trying to say. It basically, it's, it's, uh, we have a, a task force right now that basically is working on those particular section 30 that we're trying to work with, with the IRS. So this is something that is ongoing, we're, we're working on it, we'll be happy to try and give you a report on the history of section 30 every year for the last 10 years, then you can see where the monies are coming in. I mean, if that's something that you, you, you want to look at, we can, and those are the things that we, we, you know, through all the years that we work, Marie mentioned the 30-some million dollars that we can solve back then, that's, that's an effort that we between, uh, uh, DRT, the government of Guam, and, and IRS. So we are working on this reconciliation, it's just a matter of time, and we do get money every now and then, that's, that's what I'm trying to point out.
My, my whole point, John, is that if we're working on it, it should be easy to report. And the failure to report and then turning around and saying we don't have the resources to do the report, well, if you don't have the resources to do the report, then how are you reconciling it if you cannot even track it?
What I'm saying is, I, I'll be happy to try and go back and look at the history of section 30, how much money are coming in, in addition to what we asked. Is that something that you want to, we want to see, but basically, we are working on it, that's what I'm saying.
And again, again, Mr. Chairman, the point of the questioning isn't to say that you're not doing your job, but the point of passing these bills was to point you into other directions where there's other opportunities. I'm grateful that you guys collected that last section 30 reconciliation, but I think these are a whole bunch of other areas that we're not reconciling. And the lack of a report makes it very clear that it's not being tracked to a level that's going to be able to be reconciled. The IRS isn't going to reconcile it if you're not tracking it. So provide the report so we can know that it's being tracked and that it's going, that the reconciliation is taking place. But your response in this hearing is that you haven't even done it because you don't have the resources. So you know, again, I'm glad that work has been done in the past, but what was accomplished in the past does not mean that we don't need to work on what's not being done today. And these bills were passed in order to compel the agency to do these reconciliations in these other areas, because these are longstanding areas. I don't think we've ever reconciled interest income on credit cards of the IRS, and I think that's a huge amount that we can definitely capture. And so that's why these laws were passed, that's why these reports were requested, and if we're able to see them and know that it's being worked on, then everybody would be at ease, but that's not what we've seen, and that's not what was testified here today, to today. And so you can provide me with a history of what you've collected, that's great, I'm glad, but this is the work that's been mandated since October, and we haven't gotten it. And I'm, you know. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I was waiting for, Mr. Camacho, if you can commit to making and providing the reports. The only thing I'm, I'm really want to wrap it up on is that, number one, when I was at the, employed at the Department of Revenue and Taxation, there was a task force within the department, not from downtown. I'm concerned about businesses that are conducting business on Guam and don't have a license. Businesses conducting business on Guam, having a license and not up to date in taxes. Businesses doing business on Guam that shouldn't be doing business on Guam. I'm just concerned, is, is the department moving on that areas? Because you know, there are a lot of laws, federal laws that covers that.
I, I guess, Senator, I think you, you were part of that task every year, every now and then, we walk the streets of the, to, to actually do compliance work, make sure that all the businesses have a license, and if they don't have a license, there's a penalty for, for not having a license, then basically, I think we do that every year, and, and not only that, we, we, every year, we basically run a report to ensure that all the businesses renew their licenses. And if I recall, maybe three, four, five years ago, when we did this, we actually found out there was about 700 businesses that didn't renew, you know that, in one particular year. So we're doing that, we, we want to try and walk the street more often, but I think every year we try to get a few weeks in or a few months, but we're, we're looking at maybe walking the street again soon to do, do a compliance check for some of the businesses. But there are, and we're not only looking about general businesses, but we're also looking at other areas like securities, insurance, and all these things, real estate, we're, we're looking at those things. So in our, we are going out there and, and, and we, we have a lot of these things that we're, are ongoing, and we also, you know, things that we, we work with the, with the AG's office on some of these things, and we have a lot of things that are in court, so as far as those, in businesses, we are, and, and it's just a matter of, you know, the timing of it and when we go out.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure it's very clear to the people of Guam that if you're doing business, and you don't got a business license, expect to be visited by the Department of Revenue and Taxation.
Yes.
And the department does have the authority to shut their business down immediately. And if you're doing business and you don't, and you have an expired license, they need to understand that, that the department can also shut them down. So that, that, I mean, I just, the people want me to hear this, that the department's going to go out and start, hopefully, start doing the compliance big time, because the compliance will drive the train on a lot of taxes, because I'm, and I know that Senator Siniklas and I will be looking forward to those, those monthly reports. Probably in a week, we'll get at least one report in, because I know Marie's looking at me that I'll get your report, and I'll be looking for Marie next week on, where's that first month report?
We'll, we'll get her.
If we start with one month report, I know it would be easier to continue it, okay?
We'll get our expert.
Okay, is there anything that you, any of you would like to bring up?
Um, yes. Going back to our budget, I noticed that we can, we.
Convince the governor to sign the budget, then we can say your budget.
We can hire, unfortunately, we also have, I'm sorry, I, that's, that's his call. Anyway, so we have some LTAs in our budget, but it doesn't allow us to extend. I know we, we can hire, but only on retirement, and you know, there, there was a category on hiring, but what about the LTAs?
You're guaranteed limited terms.
I'm sorry?
You're limited term, boys.
Right, yes, I'm sorry, yes, limited term, and only because it affects driver's license, that's where most of them are at, and if there's any possibility of at least extension, I, I'm not sure. Otherwise, we're going to have to close down the, the driver's license satellite.
Well, the only thing I think I'll comment, and I, and I, I believe Senator Siniklas agree with me, once the budget is signed, then we can consider a possible amendment to the budget.
Okay, okay.
But I don't, I don't want to say we'll, we'll consider it, because we understand the impact, but until we see the budget signed, then we'll take a look at, then we'll ask you how we fund it within your budget, and how you can move, and making sure that, you know, we want to service the people as much as possible.
Okay, great.
Okay, and that's our focus, you know, and, and, and once it's signed, then we can move on it, okay?
Okay, thank you for that, and on the other note, can we also look at possibly amending the, the, the BPT laws and collections, and, and including the contingency language to have a collection agency go out there, or a third party go out and do outsourcing the collection?
As a matter of fact, I think, Senator Siniklas, I have spoken about that, in addition to the tobacco tax, stamp tax, we'll take a look at the, the amendments of the law, so that you can outsource some portion of collection.
Yes, okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and, and I think this would conclude the oversight, the oversight hearing.
Senator, you know, I hate to, there's one, actually, one slide I never really talk about, which is the electronic filing, and I apologize, I, I, what's happening, but just briefly, we, we need the support of, of the legislature to actually give us the resources for basically moving towards e-filing for income tax, especially now that, you know, it's, it's down to one form, it, it's so simple, it's, it's, I think, one page, and you know, if, if we get, you know, we get the, 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 the funding for it, and we get these, these in, it's going to minimize our manpower, basically, to process these returns. I mean, we, we have about 73,000 returns, I think 78,000 returns that are filed every year, and a lot of that are on, this is for income tax. And you know, if there's something that you guys can look at, it, it'll be, you know, right now, the IRS has a 78% on the individuals, I believe, online filing, 78%, millions and millions of people are filing, so we, we like to try and get, you know, we have a 1040 EG online, which about 1,000, 1,000 some people file every year, but we're looking at this because now it's only one form, but you know, the, the attachments or the schedules are a little bit more, but some people may use very few schedules, some none, but if we have the sources to actually, and the funding for it to actually go out and, and basically get something that would relieve our, all our income tax processes to do other things, in other words, rather than, you know what I'm talking about.
We'll, we'll, we'll meet up and we'll discuss that, because I know you got Larry back here, and that's his area that he was working, he was the income tax guy, so I think we'll sit down and we'll come up with how we can amend the law and see how we can implement, or introduce that in a bill, real soon.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. But, but now that he brought that up, is there any movement on the online filing mandatory for GRTs?
I know there's a bill, right?
I think there was a bill.
There is a bill, right, the bill was introduced, I'm just waiting for that public hearing, it hasn't come back to me.
Okay.
It might be over at the speaker's office, so, once it comes out, then we'll be able to move, because if you remember, and there were, unfortunately, at Revenue and Tax, I visited there one time, there was a couple of folks talking about the $25 fee, and he was actually, I would say he was talking online, because when I approached the, the manomco up there and explained to them that if you just want to drop the paper, now someone's going to do it for you, that's why the fee exists, but if they bring you to a kiosk, a computer, and show you how to do it, you don't pay. And they said, oh, okay, boy. But there are some folks that are in the private industry that come up there to the Department of Revenue and Tax, and they're just very slippery with the mouth, not understanding the, the bill, and how it's supposed to help the Department of Revenue and Tax and help everybody, so that GRT will be mandatory, e-filing.
Reporting for this, yes.
So, that being said, we'll, we'll talk more on the side, on the bill, and, but the committee will continue, well, if anybody wants to bring up anything else further, please feel, feel free to just email my office, you have my email. And, it's a huge mercy to all that have attended and participated in today's hearing, and for those at home, thank you for watching. Good afternoon.
Thank you.